This is a call to order for the City Council Meeting of Wyoming, Michigan, on October 6, 2025. The first item of business is the invocation by Pastor Mark Boeslog from Wyoming, Michigan. If you wish and are able, please stand for the invocation. The pledge of allegiance will follow.
Let's pray together this evening. Father, we are thankful for each one who is here tonight as servants of our city. We thank you for the good work that they have done and continue to do. And we just ask that you would bless them for their service. We also pray that you would give them great wisdom as they look after the affairs of our city, as they decide how to appropriate the funds that are under their control. And we just pray that all of those things would be done in a way that would bring you glory and that would be for the good of our community. Father, we ask that as the matters of business are discussed this evening and decided upon that you would give wisdom and fairness and that you would be glorified in the decisions that are made here in this chamber. Father, we're thankful for the blessings that you've given to us, the city in which we live, and all of the things that are under our stewardship. We thank you for Jesus, your Son, who came and gave his life so that we could know life eternal. We ask now that you would lead and guide in this meeting in the strong and powerful name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's do the roll call.
Councilmember Arnoyes.
Here.
Brethauer.
Here.
DeCraeger. Hill. Postma.
Here.
Postler.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. I'd like a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmembers Hill and DeCraeger tonight. Moved by Postma, support by Brethauer. Call the roll.
Councilmember Postma.
Yes.
Brethauer.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
Postler.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Approval of minutes. You were sent the minutes from September 25, 2025. I'm sorry, September 15, 2025, and those will stand as written and as mailed to you unless there's reasons to edit or change. Okay, seeing none, those minutes are approved. Approval of agenda. Motion, please. Motion by Arnoyes, support by Postler. Any changes or anything to add to that tonight? Okay, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Arnoyes.
Yes.
Postler.
Yes.
Brethauer.
Yes.
Postma.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. No public hearings tonight. Public comment on agenda items. The public comment period is reserved for comment on agenda items only. If you wish to speak about an item that is not on the agenda, please hold your comments until the acknowledgement of visitors section at the end of the meeting. You have three minutes after approaching the podium. Please provide your name and address, anyone tonight, on agenda items only. Okay, seeing none, move on. We have a presentation and a proclamation tonight. First presentation is on the Strategic Plan Quarterly Report by Patrick Waterman.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to present the third quarterly report for 2025 on the strategic plan. As you know, we do these every three months, and we're tracking these now using ClearGov, which provides you and the residents real-time updates on all the status that our department heads are inputting. Happy to report that we are over 50% now complete, nearing 52%. The vast majority of our objectives are 94% complete at either underway, complete, or nearing completion. So, on a five-year plan, we kind of look at this as a five-year plan. We're ahead of schedule, so that's a good thing. And what we do here is we'll just kind of give an overview. This isn't everything that's been updated in the last quarter, but these are kind of the highlights for your benefit. Under the community pillar, there's four goals. The first goal is strengthen community relations in the Wyoming sense of identity. That has a 2026 target completion date. Remember, the year is our calendar year, so our hope is to have this all completed by the calendar year end of 2026. We are 56% overall progress on that. Some of the key completions on there is that we have selected a new website vendor that will be coming to City Council for approval, and we're very excited about this because the new vendor not only is going to be producing a new website and internet for us, but there's a lot of modules that they offer that will streamline a lot of the activities that we do here at the city. So, look for that in the weeks ahead. We also have newly branded city facility and park signs, designs done. I believe most of you, if not all of you, saw the two options we were looking at on that. We got feedback from you and have moved forward on a finalized design, and we're hoping that those will be installed in early 2026. And then, as you probably see around town, our city vehicles and street signs continue to be updated with the new Wyoming branding. Under the Implement Placemaking Initiatives, that enhance our vibrancy and quality of life, we had some huge strides on this last quarter. Most recently, the 28th Street Bridge, pedestrian bridge and trail system, we had a ribbon cutting on the 27th of September. I believe we had well over 1,400 some.
1,400.
Okay. I was, I think the crossing of the bridge was quite a few.
1,800.
1,800. So, that was an exciting detail, and it's lit up every morning for people to see as they come in. In addition to the Corwell Health and Bentley Automotive Developments, G-Lock was recently approved by this body, and they're scheduled for construction on Site 36. And then, we also had the Godwin Mercado ribbon cutting on the 16th. So, great, great progress under that goal. Under the Enhance Community Engagement and Recreational Opportunities for Residents, our Parks team is doing a great job on implementing the pickleball court objective in there. They're going to be doing additions to the pickleball system, pickleball court system every year with plans for Lemry, Jackson, and Lamar over the next three years. And then, under the Encourage More Forte Housing in the City, that's a 2027 completion target, we're about 27% complete with that. In the Community and Economic Development Department, they started collecting data for housing needs analysis, and they're pulling information from the American Community Survey and other various sources to begin their review. Brick and mortar success we've had is you recently approved a pilot and an MSA on a $5.5 million reinvestment into the Pineary Park Apartments right behind the police station. That is one of the city's most affordable housing developments, if not the most, and that was a great reinvestment in that asset. And then, lastly, under community, we have, or excuse me, that was the fourth on that. And we move to safety. The one safety goal is to implement and adopt more proactive public safety initiatives with a 2028 completion date. We're now working with Kent County and other local units of government throughout Kent County, partnering with Grand Valley State University to update a deer population survey. As you know, we've had a tremendous amount of deer car accidents along our county roads. We're working with Grand Valley to track those accidents, to create hotspot maps, and come back with some real concrete recommendations on what to do with that. So, we hope to see that come back in the form of recommendations next spring. And then, lastly, on the stewardship bowl, there's, or pillar, there's four goals. First, strengthen and maintain the strong financial position of the city. That's a 2029 completion target, and we're about halfway done with that. Jody and her team have created a fund balance evaluation and a booklet that was shared with City Council, and then that booklet will be refreshed every time we have an audit done. And then, the city is continuing to develop and implement a communication strategy around the new village ballot proposal, and that's something I know we're going to be talking about in the upcoming retreat. And we're using the new digital record, Wyoming Record, to communicate that information out, which has been very effective. Under Enhancing the Efficiency and Effectiveness of Operations, that's a 2029 completion date. We're at 61% progress. We recently received a draft organizational assessment for the Finance Department. If you recall, we had the same process done for the IT Department a few years back, and now that's been done by Plant Moran for our Finance Department. Those recommendations are under review, and we're going to come back with an action plan once those are known. As I mentioned, the village consolidation scenarios, where staff is working on preparing for you what those will look like, and those will be presented to you during the upcoming retreat. We also have had an architect complete the draft plans for the renovation of the Public Works Building, and we recently updated the efficiency log. I think you might have remembered seeing that, but we are, as staff, tracking everything we do in terms of saving taxpayer dollars or saving labor hours from a staff perspective. That's just a way to demonstrate to you what steps are taken to make things more efficient and effective here. And again, that will be presented as part of the budget process each year. Next, Improving City Infrastructure and Service Reliability, 2030 completion target. We're at 42% complete. The city's met with design engineers for the second water intake to discuss timelines and the probable cost estimates. We're going to be looking at the neighboring impacts to our communities and what the permits are, mean to be pulled with that. And then, the surge system, suppression system out at the water plant has been awarded, and all four of those phases of that construction on that project are underway as well. And then, lastly, Attracting Training and Retaining a Talented Workforce, that's a 2028 completion target, mostly falling on the shoulders of the HR Department. We're about 34% complete. They had multiple city department reps conduct mock interviews at City Hall for a group of local high school students, again, trying to attract them to local government jobs and get the word out about how great this work is. Pontifex is in the, provided preliminary reports on our citywide wage study, which I think you're all familiar with. That wage study will be used to help guide our discussions as we go into union negotiation contracts, and then HR will bring forth recommendations on that. And then, lastly, IT and HR are working on assessing citywide how we as staff are using technology, the programs that we pay for each year, how proficient are we as staff, and what, where are those areas of weakness that we can do better in training ourselves up? So, that is, this is just kind of a visual recommendation or representation of the three pillars. You can see, we want to see those bars continue to go up towards 100% completion over time, and we're at these status points. So, happy to take any questions. I do want to add one thing that we're going to be doing going forward. ClearGov has the ability to tie directly to the budget side of things, so that's one element that we want to take to the next step, is tying these actual projects to the budgetary impacts that they require. Right now, there's no connection between things like develop a community center and what it actually takes from a budget standpoint to do that. So, that'll be an evolution of this program as we go forward.
Thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Waterman? It's the last time we'll see him presenting our strategic plan report, so got someone to hand this off to?
Yes, we do. Yep, we do. We have it trained up, and it's going to keep going forward, so. I do think that this will be something you'll probably spend some time on in this year's retreat, though. Just because at 50% complete, you might want to look at what's next, what's coming, and that would be a good strategy.
Questions, council? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have one proclamation tonight. Is there anyone here tonight from the organization that we're supporting, Extra Mile Day? I didn't know if someone was going to actually come. Okay. So, this proclamation is for the recognition of Extra Mile Day, November 1, 2025. Whereas the city of Wyoming is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas the city of Wyoming is a community that encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contributions to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas the city of Wyoming is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the city of Wyoming acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America is to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2025. And now, therefore, I, Kent Vanderwood, Mayor of the City of Wyoming, Michigan, do proclaim November 1, 2025 to be Extra Mile Day in the city of Wyoming, and urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in their own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. So, there we go. I'm going to probably get it back. All right, let's, no reports from city officers, no budget amendments. I'll take a motion for the consent agenda, please. Motion by Postler, support by Postma. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Postler.
Yes.
Postma.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
Brethauer.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Wasn't ready for that, it came so fast. Resolution A, please.
Resolution A is to approve the amended bylaws of the Wyoming Tree Commission.
Motion, please, by Arnoyes, support by Brethauer. Mr. Shea, can you explain why we're doing this?
The council approved the ordinance to really formally or appropriately form the Tree Commission, and we reviewed the amended bylaws with the council back then, back in November of '24. It was an oversight on our part to have the council actually approve the amended bylaws as well. So, these are before you, and again, the bylaws really were amended to reduce the minimum number of members from seven down to five members, and it also reflect that the Tree Commission itself does not have contracting authority since the council can't delegate that to a board or commission. And it just reflected that any funds that are allocated for the planting or replacement of trees will be part of the annual city budget and not a separate tree commission fund or budget.
Great. So, you probably all recall that discussion back in November. This is just to make it official.
Yeah, it was just, just an oversight. We should have had it approved there, and Kelly caught it during her.
Good job.
Audit of the boards and commissions.
You do.
Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Arnoyes.
Yes.
Brethauer.
Yes.
Postma.
Yes.
Postler.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Resolution 14B.
Resolution B is to accept a proposal for professional services. Oh, excuse me. Let me go up to 14B. Resolution B is to accept the Federal Emergency Management Agency's assistance to firefighters' grant.
Motion by Postma, support by Postler. This is good news.
Yeah, so this is a grant that would cover 90% of the cost of new fitness equipment for the four fire stations, as well as set up a wellness and fitness program, basically a formal fitness and injury prevention program at the fire department. So, you know, here we're providing things for physical health. We provide mental health services, and here we're trying to provide a program that either can prevent injuries or get firefighters recovered from injuries as quickly as possible. So, we have a grant that will cover 90% of that cost with just a 10% match from the city.
Questions for John? I know, can't prevent hassles in the crowd tonight, too, if you have a question for him. Anybody? Nope, it's called the roll.
Councilmember Postma.
Yes.
Postler.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
Brethauer.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Let's go to award of bids, contracts, purchases, and renewal of bids and contracts. A, please.
Resolution A is for the purchase of extrication equipment.
Motion by Postma, support by Postler.
I like to refer to it kind of as the jaws of life, but equipment that's used on vehicles, and we're looking to order two sets of it, one to replace a set that goes back to 2012, that is gas-powered and doesn't have the capability to conduct extrication on some of the more modern vehicles that have stronger metals. And also, a second set would be purchased and be housed at our Burton Fire Station now that that is open.
Pretty cool looking. Any questions about these pieces of work here? Let's, let's, let's take the grant and buy them. Call the roll.
Councilmember Postma.
Yes.
Postler.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
Brethauer.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. B, please.
Resolution B is to accept a proposal for professional services for the Marquette Park Phase 1 redevelopment.
Motion, please. Motion by Arnoyes, support by Brethauer.
So, this is a proposal from MCSA Group to put together plans and put together bid documents for some significant improvements to Marquette Park. There'll be some trail enhancements, improvements along Plaster Creek, expanding the existing dog park, putting in a restroom building and a sledding hill and a shelter, and so they would put those plans together and also oversee the construction. So, this is just the engineering portion of it. We would go out for bids, obviously, for the construction.
Any questions?
When do you anticipate this happening?
I think they would start this fall, and I think we would be looking for going out for bids later this winter with construction next year.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no more questions, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Arnoyes.
Yes.
Brethauer.
Yes.
Postma.
Yes.
Postler.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. We're going to lump C, D, and E together, please. They're all somewhat related, so let's take those three together.
Resolution C is to accept change notice number one for the Information Technology Improvement Plan. Resolution D is for IT staff augmentation continuance, and resolution E is to concur with the purchase of CradlePoint routers and to authorize future purchase of CradlePoint routers.
Motion, please. Motion by Brethauer. Support by Postma.
So, the first two are really related, so that IT Department organizational assessment, and the first one is we would work with, continue to work with Due Point on an hourly basis and on a narrower scope of work, mainly to do with project management and setting up what we call a project management office to help us not only identify projects but prioritize projects, and because many of the projects that other city departments use, use IT services, and so we want to have a situation where it's a little more organized in terms of if they need those IT services, prioritizing which projects IT works on first and which ones they work on second and third, and Due Point would help us set that up and get that organized. And then, D is continuing to use Trace 3 and Atlas Coast Consulting on various projects that come up where we have a temporary surge on projects, and rather than hiring additional IT staff for a project that has a finite duration, we would look to contract with those companies. So, for example, we just recently updated all of our devices from Windows 10 to Windows 11, and we used, I believe it was Trace 3, to do that work, and so we've got some additional projects in terms of modernizing the Wi-Fi at City Hall, installing new servers, upgrading operating systems, refreshing our lift station network and so forth, that they would be used for that. And then, the last item, E, is the CradlePoint routers provide an internet connection between computers and, that are in the vehicle, and they use cell service to provide that internet service to those computers that are in a vehicle. We had a very good deal on these. I think we received a credit worth almost half the cost of the CradlePoint routers for 21 of them, and we're looking to purchase 27 more, partly for the inspection vehicles, vehicles in the inspection department, as well as those at the utility plants.
Great. Any questions? See Paul's here tonight, too, if you want to drill him deep. He can fill us in. Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Brethauer.
Yes.
Postma.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
Postler.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. F, please.
Resolution F is for the purchase and installation of a replacement transaction drawer for the Treasurer's Department.
All right. Finally, Postler makes the motion, and Arnoyes supports it.
Under the category of the most frustrating project that I think we're working on, it's taking a lot longer to get all the information we need to design and then ultimately construct the canopy and track system outside the drive-thru. Part of that, we were going to replace the drawer in the Treasurer's Office as part of that project because the current drawer is really not working well, and due to the delays in the canopy system, we're going to separate this out, and this would replace the drawer system as well as the audio, audio system related to that. So, it will hopefully be a lot easier to literally open and close the drawer for the employees that use the drive-thru.
Yep. So, again, this is just the first step, though.
This is just.
Complete overhaul of.
Correct.
Of the drive-thru. One step at a time. It's called the roll.
Councilmember Postler.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
Brethauer.
Yes.
Postma.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Let's combine G and H, please.
Resolution G is for the purchase of a graphics printer, cutter, and production equipment, and resolution H is for the purchase of two trailer-mounted lighted arrow boards.
Motion by Brethauer. Support by Postler.
So, the first item, we use this graphics printer to make signs and vehicle graphics for city vehicles, and we actually, our current one is over 10 years old and doesn't recognize some of the current, and this is going to quickly get above my knowledge, but doesn't currently reflect some of the current formats that are used to create these signs, and we ran into this with some of our new logo information. So, this printer would have that capability and allow us to continue to print our signs as well as vehicle graphics. The second one is we have a total of five trailer-mounted lighted arrow boards. We replaced two of them not too long ago, and this would be replacing two more, so we'd have four out of the five replaced, and we use that in construction zones, obviously, to divert traffic and keep the zone safe.
Questions, comments?
I love the visuals tonight. I don't know whose idea that was, but man, it's awesome.
Well, I think that was mostly Patrick's idea, and we've got the new TV screen and the, and the screen's there, so we're kind of giving it a test there and seeing how it's working.
It's nice. Good, well done, folks. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Brethauer.
Yes.
Postler.
Yes.
Arnoyes.
Yes.
Postma.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. And last but not least, we'll take I, J, and K together tonight.
Resolution I is to accept a proposal for drain line repair. Resolution J is to extend the bid for large diameter sanitary sewer inspection and assessment. And resolution K is for award of bid of the wastewater treatment plant main building coating project.
Motion, please. Motion by Postma, support by Postler.
So, the first one, there's a 10-inch line that runs from our wastewater treatment plant main building to the raw sewage pump building, and it experiences slow flow. We've had to flush it out numerous times. It's about 25 feet below the ground, and between it and the surface is a whole bunch of other utilities, so it's very hard to get at. In fact, when we, we looked originally at a proposal to put a new line in at a higher elevation and use essentially lift stations to get the sewage from point A to point B, the bid came in at 1.5 million, which was far higher than what we wanted to spend. So, we went back to the drawing board and were working with Plumbers Environmental Services, and they feel that they can put a liner in the pipe to replace the existing liner that did not properly cure in place and cause this issue. So, they would de-water this area and then put a liner in, and we're making some assumptions here. We think we can use one well to de-water this. If we have to use a second well, we have a contingency to cover that, and we're assuming there's about a 10-foot section of pipe that needs to be replaced. If it's a little bit more than that, that's why we have a contingency. So, it'd be about, with the contingency, about $100,000. And then, if you recall, I think it was back in March, we contracted with a firm to do visual, sonar, and laser inspections of our large sanitary sewer pipes, anywhere, I think, from 24-inch to 66-inch diameter pipes, and they've agreed to extend their pricing through the end of our fiscal year at the same price as it was this past year. So, we expect to do about $385,000 worth of inspections of those pipes. And then, last but not least, that you see on the screen there, we received three bids to paint the. to paint the lower level of the wastewater treatment plant's main building, and that's just over $60,000 to do that.
Wow. It looks like it needs it.
It does.
So, that's the waterproofing and little avoid leaks and all that kind of good stuff, right? Good. Questions?
John, is there any... So, the liner project, you said you hope it works. Is there any guarantee that if Plumbers does this and then it doesn't work? Is there any... Do they have any warranty work with this that we would be... Or are we just rolling the dice with our best odds that this...
I know, and Aaron can give more details, but I know we had extensive conversations. They came out to the site and looked at it, and I mean, I don't want to... Do I want to give you an absolute 100%, but they are highly confident that they can do this. From what I understand, the last liner that was put in, because it's so wet underneath there, it was not... It just was not able to cure because it got wet. And here, we're going to be doing extensive de-watering to stop the flow of infiltration into that pipe until that liner can cure. Aaron, I don't know if there's anything else I need to add to that, or...
No, that's correct. Like John said, there's so much groundwater infiltration there that the old... The last time we tried it, it put pressure on that liner and caused it to collapse. So, this time, the plan is to de-water it so there's no groundwater. Put the liner in, and it uses a steam, an inflatable bladder essentially to blow it up around that pipe, and hopefully it cures in place. But, you know, we're hoping it works. They're confident it'll work. If not, we've got a little bit of a project.
Yeah, and this is still significantly less than what we were looking at, open cutting and putting at a higher level and putting in, you know, pump stations, lift stations, which now have to be maintained. And so, we'd really like to maintain the gravity flow of this if at all possible.
I like the difference in cost. That's phenomenal, so good job.
Good work on that.
Yours? Hopefully, it works.
Yeah. It's complicated because there's just a whole spaghetti of utilities above this pipe. So, you can't just put an excavator in and dig. You'd hit probably 17 different utilities in there, so...
Did we call the roll yet? Let's do it.
Okay. Councilmember Postma?
Yes.
Posler?
Yes.
Arnoyes?
Yes.
Brathauer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. We have no ordinances tonight, no informational material.
I just wanted to...
Oh, we do have information.
Just a couple things, and I did not know this gentleman, but Jerry Snyder was our former Public Works Director here for... and worked at the city, I think, for about 34 years and retired in 2002. He passed away this past week.
I had heard that.
I think there's some obituary information online about that, so I just wanted to let council know that. And then, just more publicly, this is Patrick's last meeting here, and I just wanted to publicly thank him for everything he's done here for the last two-plus years, and he's been a real asset to the city, and I'm really sorry to see him go. I'm happy for him personally, but selfishly, I'm pretty bummed. So, our loss is definitely Ottawa County's gain, but just wanted to say publicly, thanks for everything that you've done, and he'll be with us here through the end of next week.
Thank you, Patrick. Well done. Well done. Seems like just yesterday that we greeted you here and welcomed you to our staff, so time goes so fast. Okay, acknowledgement of visitors. This public comment period is an opportunity to share concerns or present topics to the city council that were not part of the meeting's agenda. This is not an opportunity for dialogue with council, but council may make referrals or request staff to follow up. Please provide your name and address when approaching the podium. There's a three-minute limit per person, anyone tonight in the crowd. Any topic?
Hello, my name is Cassandra Cockuplahos. I live at 2550 DeHoop Avenue, right near the new pathway that was constructed between Pineary Park and Grace Christian University. I want to give you a timeline. So, May 2024, I received my first notice, a letter instructing me to remove my shed within two weeks. This letter included a phone number for Nicole, but the voicemail was never checked. On the deadline, I called around the city and found Paul Smith. He worked with me and said he would have the construction crew tear down my shed at no cost to me while they build this pathway. And as long as I have my items cleared out by June 20th. In September, they tore down my shed. In December, they started construction mid-December on the pathway right next to my house and had to stop one week later due to freezing temperatures in Michigan. In February, I met with Paul in person to express my concerns of the pathway. My neighbors were not aware of what construction was going on and the potential path that was crossing a dangerous portion of DeHoop. I was also unaware of any public meeting that had been held regarding this pathway. Paul confirmed there was no direct public input process for the residents most affected by the pathway, and the only meeting where it was brought up was a meeting regarding the trails connecting to Burton Street, not this pathway. It's also not mentioned in the Wyoming master plan. So, construction resumed and continued through this summer. For months, there were no safety markings, signs, or a crosswalk. Eventually, the hawk light was put up, and there is a constant audible beeping signal for the blind. This was installed right next to my house without notice to me or my nearby residents. My requests: I'm asking for reimbursement for privacy fences that are needed along my property line and my six neighbors impacted from this unapproved project. This would assist in restoring us to our prior state of security. I'm also asking for the audible signal to cease beeping outside of high-traffic hours to respect residential quiet hours. Maybe there's a way to make this motion sense or something. And lastly, I am asking for improved communication and transparency for future projects, including public notice outside of social media or the city's website for input before construction begins. I am not here to stand in the way of progress. I care deeply about our neighborhood and want to see it thrive safely and responsibly. I'm simply asking that our voices, the ones who live beside these projects, be part of the process. I thank you for your time and hearing me out.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to make referral, or would you like her...
We can get in touch with her and talk about those...
Appropriate staff will get in touch with you. Call up Arnoyes. Okay, what else tonight? Okay, let's go around the council. Anything, Mr. Arnoyes, Mr. Postma, I mean.
Of course. You know, I'd just like to extend my thanks to Patrick as well. I commented on that a little bit the last meeting, but we'll miss you, Patrick, so wish you luck in Ottawa County and stay in touch.
Congratulations, Patrick. Congratulations, Nicole, on the opening of the bridge, and congratulations to the Parks Department on a wonderful trick-or-treat event.
I have several things. Is this on? Yes, it is. Okay.
Several time to do so.
All right. Yeah, I spoke with a resident today about a number of things, most of which I'll just talk privately with department heads. But the one that I think merits more discussion, I guess, is he's wondering about the feasibility of a crosswalk being added on Byron Center across from Ithaca, like right across from Lamar Park. I don't know if you can picture where there's like that staircase right there where it's not really well-kept, but there's a staircase, and so people apparently walk from those neighborhoods to Lamar Park. And apparently, there's a big problem with drag racing and like cars racing through that portion of Byron Center between Porter and Chicago. So, just wondering about the feasibility of getting a crosswalk installed in that particular spot.
So, on Ithaca Street is where the problem is?
Yeah, well, it's basic... It's Ithaca and Byron Center. So, Ithaca dead ends at Byron Center. So, it's... And it's right across from that little staircase that leads to kind of right where like the tennis courts are approximately.
Right.
But in general, the traffic issue on that stretch was another big part of his concern. So, that was one thing. Thing number two, I was really bummed to miss the bridge opening because I was out of town, but I'm really excited to be... Now that I drive past 28th Street, I see people on the bridge, and it feels really good after all of the super-duper-long construction. Actually, it wasn't that long, and considering how long construction can take, I feel like this was actually pretty quick, but it still felt like a long time. So, it feels really good to have the bridge up, and I know Patrick told us last week not to say too much because it would be this week, but I know we already kind of said a lot, but I'll just echo that this whole thing about our loss being Ottawa's gain is kind of full circle now because originally, their loss was our gain. So, I guess we're just completing the loop.
We were saying that same thing.
Yes, but you will definitely be missed.
Thank you, Marissa. Mr. Arnoyes?
All right. Cheers and congratulations and wish you well, and thank you. Very short, as I said my part earlier. Just a few other things. Just a really nice job with the ribbon cutting, the bridge ribbon cutting. Very well attended, very well done, very impressive. So, it's something I think we're very proud of. So, nice job. It was far even better than what I would have anticipated. So, nice job on that. And then, just even today, just a big thank you to our staff and our Public Works team, Aaron, for all of you for your creativity, what you do on a daily basis to solve problems and do it in the most cost-effective way. Just seeing what you do, you encounter lots of different roadblocks, but you find ways to get up and around and over them, and you do it in a way that's very ethically responsible. So, cheers to you for doing that, too, and thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good. Yeah, wow. All those plus more. Patrick, we're going to definitely miss you. We enjoyed having you here when we did, and we know you're going where you're supposed to be. So, that's what's important. So, leaf container rental. As a reminder, our Public Works Department offers leaf container rentals starting today, October 6 through Thursday, November 25. You can get that information on our website, wyomingmi.gov/leaves. Drug Takeback Day, the DEA's National Drug Takeback Day event is approaching Saturday, October 25 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Wyoming Police Department or at the U of M Health West Campus. Again, more information's on the website. And then, the Trick or Trail... Trick or Treat Trail recap.